Welcome, everybody. On behalf of Mass DEP, we thank you for taking time out of your evening to join us for this public hearing on the proposed updates to the Wetlands Protection Act and the 401 Water Quality Certification Regulations. My name is Stephanie Mora. I'm the Division Director of Wetlands and Waterways at Mass DEP. And I'm joined by several folks here on my team. Lisa Rhodes, our Wetlands Program Chief, will be offering a brief presentation shortly. Let me give a quick overview of expectations for the evening. So I have a few housekeeping and sort of opening remarks for context. Then I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Rhodes to offer an abbreviated overview of the proposed regulatory changes to the Wetlands Protection Act. And then we will open up the hearing for folks who would like to offer a public comment or oral testimony. So a few, a few things for context. One is just to make sure folks understand this is, this is a public hearing, not a public information session. The difference is that at the public information sections that we offered in the prior weeks, we offered three of those. There was a more detailed presentation of the proposed regs and then time for question and answer after. Materials, including the presentation that was given, as well as a recording of the conversations and the back and forth. Those are all available on our website. And my colleague Tori Wu is going to put the, the link to that in the chat. In case folks were not able to attend that and would like to go back and take a look at those materials. Tonight is, tonight's meeting is a public hearing, so we will not be taking questions or, or providing answers. We will instead be welcoming your orally delivered comment or testimony that will become part of the record for this regulatory process. And we also strongly encourage folks who offer comments tonight to also please put those in writing and submit them within the public comment period. And Lisa will provide more information about that shortly. The last thing I want to do before we turn it over to Lisa is describe the protocol that we'll use for folks wanting to provide comments tonight. I will put in the chat instructions in a second. But basically, if you would like to offer comments tonight, please put your name and affiliation in the chat. And that will let us know that you would like to offer comments and we will call on you. Once the presentation is done, we will call on you in order. What we're going to do is while Lisa's giving her presentation, we're going to keep an eye on how many folks are in the queue. And if it looks like, if it looks like there's a lot of people who would like to offer comments tonight, we may limit comments to two minutes. Otherwise, we'll be more generous and offer three minutes. And again, we encourage you strongly to also submit your, your comments in writing. So with that, I am going to put those instructions into the chat. And I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Rhodes, our Program Chief.
Great. Thank you, Stephanie. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. We, we appreciate your time here tonight. I do want to add that if anybody, I don't think Stephanie mentioned this, but if anybody wants closed caption, you click on more, the three dots that say more. And there's a way you can, there's a, an item you can click on to get closed caption. I think it says captions. So that's how you would turn that on.
Thank you, Lisa.
This presentation in this public hearing is for proposed updates to the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and Water Quality Certification Regulations at 310 CMR 10 and 314 CMR 9. I'm going to do a very quick overview of this, hopefully about 15 minutes, so we save the majority of the time for your comments. And with that, I will begin. I plan to give first an overview of the need for and the regulations proposed for land subject to coastal storm flowage. And then the other coastal resilience regulations that we're proposing. And then I will do an overview of the need and the, and the proposal for stormwater standards. And then we'll go over the schedule and how you can comment. So for starting with land subject to coastal storm flowage, you may know, but the, it's been a protected resource area under the Wetlands Protection Act since, since the beginning of the regulations, but we have never had standards. And so we think it is crucial to, to get these standards in place today. And the reason is that LSCSF or land subject to coastal storm flowage in its natural capacity absorbs wave energy and floodwater movement, prevents erosion, dissipates storm flow energy from coastal storms and sea level rise. We expect that implementation of these new standards will reduce storm and flood damage on development, will reduce risk to public health and safety, and will protect the natural function of the floodplain. And in all of this time that we've been working to, to get these standards in place, we, we realize that it's not just an, an environmentally good thing to do. It's got a lot of benefit economically as well. And I refer you to an article in Commonwealth Magazine from October of 2022 where they discussed the big three rating agencies and, and how they looked at Massachusetts. And, and one in particular, S and P rated Massachusetts environmentally, environmental risk moderately negative. Primarily because of the, the risk in the combined Boston and Cape Cod area exposing the state to significant economic disruption following a high-impact event. So implementation of these standards will not only, they, they not only make environmental sense, but they also make an economic sense for, for a strong Commonwealth. The, the, the proposed standards would affect activities that are proposed in the FEMA flood zones that are referred to as the velocity zone and the A-zone. The velocity zone is the most seaward zone with the highest wave energy. The A-zone is, is landward of the velocity zone and it is divided into two different zones, subzones. The moderate wave action zone, which is the more seaward part of the A-zone. And the minimal wave action zone, which is a more landward part of the A-zone. And the, the division, the dividing line between the MOA or the moderate wave action zone and the MEWA zone or the minimal wave action zone is called the LIMWA. The lim, limit of wave action line. And this is shown on the FEMA maps. So that is how you determine what zone you're in. The FEMA maps are located at the FEMA map service center. And those, that is where you have to look for the FEMA maps to find the Lima line and the, and the velocity zone lines to determine which zone that your activity is in. And then thus what, what standards you would, you would need to meet. So when you, when you go through the LSCSF standards that are proposed, there's a few key things to keep in mind. First, if your project is in land subject to coastal storm flowage and another wetland resource area such as coastal dune or coastal beach, you would follow the standards for the other resource area and not LSCSF standards. However, there are a number of exceptions and those I'll go over on the next slide. The next thing you would look at is which LSCSF zone are you in? Are you in the velocity zone? The MOA zone or the MEWA zone? That's how you'll determine what standards you need. The next thing you would look at is whether the project is new or previously developed, because there's different standards for those. Next, you would look to see if your project is eligible as a limited project, either in the current regulations or the proposed ones. And those are projects that where the issuing authority has discretion in applying the standards. And then finally, there's a nature, there's a new nature-based shoreline protection provision that needs to be assessed. So I mentioned in the last slide that if you're in a, in another resource area and LSCSF, you follow the standards for the other resource area with the following exceptions. All, for all projects, no new structures are allowed in the velocity zone. For new buildings in the MOA zone, which is the most seaward part of the A-zone, immediately adjacent to the velocity zone, the project structures must be elevated under the standards, under the LSCSF standards, or the dune standards, or the barrier beach standards, or the building code, whichever is higher. Work on a coastal bank that does not supply sediment or work in a rocky intertidal shore would be subject to LSCSF standards. And then finally, LSCSF standards do not apply to marine industrial uses designated port areas. Now, just getting into some of the highlights for each of the zones. In the velocity zone, there, as I mentioned, there would be no new buildings, even on pilings in the velocity zone. There are, there is a limited list of allowable, allowable activities that include walkways, boating facilities, docks, piers, repair and maintenance of coastal engineering structures, et cetera. And also if your project is in, is qualifies as a limited project, there would be discretion in applying the standards. If you're in the moderate wave action zone, the most seaward part of the A-zone, the standard for this, the, the buildings must allow unobstructed flow during base flood elevation plus two feet. There is a limited waiver provision for additional, for the additional two feet. Like you can request the additional two feet be waived under certain circumstances. And, and then there's a, a list of allowable activities similar to the V-zone. And if also if you're a limited project, there would be discretion. In the minimal wave action zone, buildings must be elevated on piles or solid foundations with one additional foot above the base flood elevation. Certain air, certain projects within the buffer zone of another resource area may be required to elevate. Fail must be avoided where structures, where, where redirection of flow would increase flooding. And then there's a number of other provisions in there as well that you can read about, you know, in the proposal. For redevelopment, redevelopment projects are required to improve existing conditions by doing things like reducing pavement, removing restrictions or providing storage. Projects cannot be built more seaward on the site or, or, and there can be no increase in the existing footprint. In the velocity zone, as I mentioned before, there's no new buildings, but reconstruction or substantial improvement on open piles can occur in the velocity zone. And, and historic structures are exempt from the elevation provisions. In highly developed areas where impervious surfaces predominate. So this would be like city centers, for example. Placement of fill for flood control would be allowed in the MEWA zone. And elevation of existing seawalls or construction of berms for flood control would be allowed in the velocity or the MOA zones as part of a flood control project conducted or supported by a public agency. And that, but there can be no redirection of wave energy or floodwaters to other properties. So moving on to other coastal resilience regulations proposed. They include limited projects for roadway elevation for roads that are at risk of sea level rise, subject to conditions. Roadway and water-dependent use relocation, if they're for, for structures that are at risk from, from sea level rise, subject to conditions. There is a scientific test project provision for projects that are testing wetland response to climate change. And there's a provision that requires evaluation of nature-based coastal resiliency projects. So that must be, must be evaluated. Moving on to the stormwater regulation update, for the, these updates would be in both the Wetlands Protection Act and the Water Quality Certification Regulations, since they're both, that, you know, essentially the same. The goals are to update outdated precipitation data with current data that reflects increasing storms, aligning with EPA's MS4 general permit to the extent possible. Promote nature-based environmentally sensitive site design and update our stormwater handbook so it's, it's more user-friendly and, and up-to-date. This table shows you the, the stormwater standards. There are 10. We are proposing, the, the biggest changes are proposed to four of the standards that are shown in blue here, standards two, three, four, and seven. And standard 11 is proposed, it's new. And that would be to support compliance with total maximum daily loads. Starting with standard two, the proposal, the existing standard, excuse me, is that post-development peak discharge rates cannot exceed pre-development peak discharge rates. And this standard won't change, but the precipitation data that is required to be used in, in, in meeting that standard is proposed to be changed from the existing Technical Paper 40, which is a precipitation atlas that's over 60 years old. And we're proposing instead to adopt the NOAA 14 Atlas that was published in 2015 and updated in 2019. Except rather than using the fitted value or the average value that's provided in the NOAA Atlas, the proposal is to require 90% of the published upper confidence interval to reflect currently observed, the larger storms that are being seen. So that we refer to as NOAA Plus. So the, we are also proposing to acquire the two, the 10, and the 100-year storm design in all instances. For redevelopment, that this standard is, is currently a maximum extent practical standard and we're proposing to, it, it would remain as a maximum extent practicable standard, only it would be maximum extent practicable of NOAA Plus. Moving on to standard three, the recharge standard. The current standard is that the annual recharge from post-development site shall approximate the annual recharge from the pre-development conditions based on soil type. What we're proposing is that A, B, and C soils have one inch of recharge if you're using the static method. And D soils would be one inch to the maximum extent practicable. And addition, additional methods are allowed, including the dynamic method and the continuous simulation method, and those are presumed to meet the one inch. Additionally, as in response to our advisory committee's request, we conducted an evaluation of the standard. And that evaluation is posted on the website where the proposed regulations are. The, the link is in the chat. The result of that reevaluation suggested that we, we are considering a 0.8 standard for recharge in addition to the one inch proposed. And we are seeking a comment on that. So, so that you can go to the website, read that document. And if you're so inclined, provide comments on, on the, you know, pointing inch versus one inch of recharge requirement. The redevelopment standard for recharge is currently maximum extent practicable and, and we are proposing that it will remain maximum extent practicable, except it will be one inch to the maximum extent practicable. We are also proposing to allow off-site mitigation for redevelopment. Standard four is for pollutant removal. And this is the most important standard to align with EPA on. The, our current standard is to remove 80% total suspended solids. The proposal that we have today in our, in our standards is to remove 90% total suspended solids and 60% total phosphorus from stormwater. And that is in alignment with, with EPA's general permit. However, we are proposing that off-site mitigation for new development would not be allowed. And that's because, you know, with the new site, it's, we think it would be feasible to, to design for this. For redevelopment, the current standard is maximum extent practicable. We're proposing that the new redevelopment standard would be to remove 80% total suspended solids and 50% total phosphorus in align, in alignment with EPA. However, instead of maintaining the existing maximum extent practicable standard, we are proposing to make this a fully meet standard for redevelopment. For most projects, there are still a number of exceptions, including most subdivision units, nine lots and, and less. Single-family houses are not subject at all to stormwater. Roadway maintenance would remain maximum extent practicable. And there are some other exceptions as well in the standards. We are also proposing to allow off-site mitigation for redevelopment for standard four and also for redevelopment for standard three. And then finally, our new standard 11 was implemented to provide renewed emphasis for compliance with TMDLs. TM, TMDLs, you know, are critical to, you know, it's a critical issue with this standard and standard four as well. In that Mass DEP's waters, impaired waters are, are growing. We are not reducing our impaired waters, which is why we are proposing the, the changes in standard four and also why we are proposing this new, this new standard 11. This standard would be if you, if your site is discharging to, or if your project is discharging to a, a, a water with a TMDL that for a TMDL for phosphorus, nitrogen, pathogens, or metals, you would be required to use specific stormwater control measures that address that type of TMDL. And, and we have a new table in the stormwater handbook that shows you which ACMs are appropriate for which TMDL. And you would also have to meet standards three and four. So if, if your new development, you would, you would meet three and four. If your redevelopment, you would meet three and four as, for redevelopment. Also, Mass DEP has a new website where you can find out if you're in a, a TMDL and what type you're in. That's on our website. Our schedule is, this is the second of two public hearings. We've held three information sessions. And, and a whole lot of other presentations in, in recent months and years. The, the, the current comment period due date is March 1st. This is when comments are due. We have one more public hearing scheduled for tomorrow at 1:00. It'll be similar to this one. And we encourage everybody to, to provide your comments. This slide shows you how you can do that. We prefer your submissions by email to dep.wetlands@mass.gov. Or if you, if you'd rather send it by paper, you, you can. And the address is here. You can send that to myself. We expect that we'll be doing extensive public outreach when these standards are, are promulgated. We have a big outreach effort planned. We also plan to develop a simplified guide for conservation commissions for both the coastal standards and the stormwater standards. So that, that'll be coming out as well. I, I'd lastly want to mention that the promulgation date that's, that's proposed is that the, the land subject coastal storm flowage and, and coastal standards would go into effect immediately upon promulgation. But we're proposing a six-month delay for the stormwater standards after promulgation of the regulations so that projects that are in the pipeline being designed aren't, aren't affected by the new standards. With that, I will turn it back to Stephanie and we will be, be happy to hear your, your comments and testimony on, on the regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. All right. We'll now turn to calling on folks who have indicated that they'd like to provide comments or oral testimony. And I would ask, I'll, I'll read folks from the chat. And when I call on you, if you could unmute yourself. If you, if you don't mind, turn on your camera, although that's not required. And then also just tell us your, your affiliation. At the moment, there are just three folks who have put their names in the chat who want to offer comment. So for those who aren't as keen on the various toolbars and buttons on the Zoom screen, you can also use the raise hand feature, which is another button on the toolbar, to let us know you'd like to comment. Or, you know, without interrupting somebody, you can unmute yourself and just speak up and let us know that you would like to provide some comment. So let, let's start with Jamie Medea.
Hello, everyone, and thank you very much for your hard work. First, we really need FAQs. Despite your wonderful presentation skills, there are too many questions, too many examples, and too many people who really don't understand, who are serious participants, knowledgeable consultants. I'm getting calls constantly. Have you gotten a cheat sheet? Have you gotten a cheat sheet? People can't understand. And they're, they're in need of that, particularly even I don't understand right now. Lisa, Ms. Rhodes just said that the land subject coastal storm flowage, when it takes effect, it'll take effect immediately. But my understanding from the way I read the reg proposal was that any notices of intent that were filed before the promulgation date would not be subject to the lands of coastal storm flowage, new requirements and new prohibitions.
That's correct for file, for filings.
Thank you. I'm glad to get that answer. It's an example. We need FAQs very, very badly. There's a lot of people who are not lawyers. They're not front row seat first, you know, readers and writers of regulations. And y'all have given us four regulatory programs all at once in one month. It's, it's a lot. It's worth doing, but it's a lot. Second, I, I have to observe what I think we all know. The coastline is not in its natural condition. We've been using and abusing the coastline for so long. It is not in its natural condition. So from my perspective, this is different from what the purpose of the original Wetlands Protection Act and regulations was. Originally, decades and decades ago, that's how old I am. It was to protect nature from people. What this should be doing is protecting people and buildings from nature along with that. The destructive forces coming our way are huge. We need to have a different mindset and a different regulatory approach than protecting nature from people. Which to me summarizes as, please include technology and design for adaptation and resiliency. And not this concept of managed retreat and nature-based solutions. Because that's not going to work, especially in places where nature has already been altered. Next, this Commonwealth Magazine citation, although I appreciate the site to a really nice readable thing. I used to be a public finance specialist before I went to law school, and Standard and Poor's and Moody's, they can be consulted with. We can talk with them as a, the state's budget people probably talk to them quite frequently. And we need to do better before these regulations are promulgated to understand whether they're going to impact our credit rating negatively and not positively. If I were reviewing these regs and I were a credit analyst, like I used to be, I would say, oh my God, they're putting out of business entire real estate developments that already exist. And the five billion dollar direct and indirect recreational boating industry, because they can't even renew their existing approvals because of the prohibition in the velocity zone. So I have to say, that's not a good reference there, if it were as serious economically, it needs much more citation than just it was in a Commonwealth magazine. Changes in the new and redeveloped area on the same site, I can't tell. Most of the sites that I work with have both redevelopment and new development. In fact, it's desirable, I'm gonna try to hurry up. But most of them, they're getting their money to adapt to climate change from the new development. And some of it is on a site that's deadbeat, derelict, and needs it badly. And it's not clear how these regulations will treat that. Especially in velocity zones where it's an outright ban. Highly problematic, once you include technology and design, one can design for velocity zones. No new structures in the velocity zones is my biggest concern about the impacts. We gotta have off-ramps that address technology and design that meets code, meets projected standards, meets projected stormwater flow, meets projected wind impacts, it has been done all over the world, and it should be done here. No designated port area exempt from all these things. Include marine industrial uses everywhere, the Commonwealth did drive-bys to establish the designated port areas. They used to be because one was eligible for federal money if you were in a DPA, and then it became prohibitive. If we're gonna include marine industrial uses as exempt, there's no reason to limit it to designated port areas. Just exempt the marine industrials if they meet certain standards. Almost done. Can't read my own handwriting, so I'll flip the page and I'll be as fast as I can. We just need examples, more examples, because Commonwealth, when it says the docks and the piers, this is all important for boating facilities as limited exceptions, is allowable? That basically means three hundred and fifty-one conservation commission cities and towns are gonna be able to make up their own minds, do you like them, do you don't like it? We have everything from dentists on these conservation commissions to really skilled consultants, not that the dentists don't learn as best they can, but they often don't. It's just too dangerous to say it's allowable with no examples, so they could freely just say no. Nah, don't feel like it, that's not okay. Nature-based resiliency projects, love it. Science, why exclude from science projects, why have them only for nonprofit environmental groups? That's a little twisted, some of us like to think that the nonprofit trade association groups, places that want to do projects, can be trusted to do their science the same as an environmental group. And then on stormwater, the entirely second completely new thing. I know I'm out of time, but I did it as fast as I could, it's a whole new set on the stormwater. Makes complete sense to do nature-based there, because you can use technology also if your project can't be nature-based. I like that, that works well. I request a suggestion you've not heard me say before. I suggest including a maintenance reporting function of the stormwater systems, because the biggest problem we're having with stormwater is old systems are not being maintained, they clog up and there are issues, so put in a reporting function, so at least somebody notices. If no reports coming in, site's been abandoned, the city or town isn't doing its maintenance, individual homeowner group associations don't know they're supposed to. Put in a reporting function just so someone notices if it's not there. And finally, they want discharge of metals on stormwater, huge problem that stormwater runoff comes from upstream and then comes onto a particular site. There needs to be something in the standards, this new standard eleven that addresses what if the runoff that's coming onto your site doesn't meet the criteria? You can't be responsible, it's not fair, to make those sites responsible for all the stormwater management that comes onto their site. Especially copper, which is, the standard for that is below drinking water standards. You can't expect people to take copper out of the drinking water that comes their way. Thank you very much, I'm sorry I went on so long, and I really appreciate the time you put into all of this, thank you. Oh, delay the implementation date, we haven't had enough time, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your comments, Jamie, and I will confess that I let the timer go on that one, because I do see that there are we should have plenty of time to accommodate what folks want to say tonight, but I will try to be mindful of the time, and thank you for your comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up is Jennifer Steele.
I think you missed one, Stephanie.
I am so sorry, yep, you are absolutely correct. Jennifer, do you mind if I jump back up and take Brad Washburn?
Not at all.
Okay, thank you, my bad. Brad Washburn.
Can you guys hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, Brad. I'm on a cell phone, and I am not camera-worthy, so I will be the little anonymous icon there. And I'll give a minute to Jamie and a minute to the woman after me, because I'll be very quick. But I do want to commend DEP for this effort, I know. Back from my time at the state, you know, there's a lot of time spent on this leading up to this effort, so. While I appreciate all efforts for this, and I'm sure Mass Port will in general be supportive of it, we just need more time to submit our comments. I'm sure we'll be submitting detailed, you know, comments as soon as we can. But this is obviously gonna affect a lot of our property interest around Boston Harbor, so. Just respectfully request some additional time to pull these, you know, detailed comments together. And with that, that's all I have, and again, thank you for that hearing tonight, and look forward to engaging with other donors in the future, thanks.
Great, thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad. All right, Jennifer.
Yeah, I will also be very brief, because I'll be repeating what we've just heard from the prior two speakers, and that is our tremendous thanks for what I know has been a huge effort and for the, you know, excellent work that you guys have done. It's also terrific to hear about the extent of outreach that you're planning to do and the guide for conservation commissions, also wonderful. But I sit on the board of MSMCP, I can't speak for the whole board. But I do know that many of our members are very concerned about the timeframe in which these comments are being requested. With the release, as was mentioned, of four major documents, and one of them extremely lengthy and technical. It's just not practical to assume that individuals and organizations can get their thoughts really well coordinated and provide them to you in a way that will be truly, truly useful. Thinking along those terms, therefore, we would respectfully request a two-month extension for all comments. And then would very much appreciate the opportunity to engage directly with DEP after the comments have been received and made public. The level of expertise and experience of trying to implement regulations resides with conservation agents and conservation commission members. And that type of insight is gonna be absolutely critical in ensuring that these regulatory changes are are in fact implementable, practical, understood, and so on. So I would really, really, really encourage the dialogue to continue. Not for years, I know this has been years in the making. But this has been, you know, this has been dropped into our laps now, and there's a tremendous amount of interest in helping shape these proposed changes, and then continuing that partnership as we look to the reg changes 2.0. So please continue to reach out, as you've already indicated you will, but please also consider expanding that ongoing communication. And with that, I'll say thanks once again.
All right, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you for your comments. Nicholas Botts. Invited to unmute yourself and offer some comments.
Hey, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm gonna keep this incredibly brief, I'm gonna reiterate what I think a lot of people have already said. Our firm is currently reviewing and trying to digest the information, and finally, we'll ask for an extension on the regulation release. That's pretty much all that we have. And, you know, appreciate all the thought and care that's been put into this, and appreciate the ability to reach out to you all today, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up is Dot McGlinsey.
Hello, Dot. Hi, everyone, Dot McGlinsey. Mass Association Conservation Commissions, thank you so much for your hard work and getting all of these reg changes together, we greatly appreciate that they're out, and I'm a broken record with everyone else. Mass Association of Conservation Commissions is both asking verbally for an extension of sixty days for the comment period, but we will also be submitting sometime this week, a letter to the commissioner asking, as well as to you all, formally requesting an extension. I know that you're probably getting pressured from many different groups to get this done as quickly as possible, we've been one of those groups to pressure you to get these things out on the street, we're glad they're out on the street, but there's so much to digest. We are hearing from our members, you heard it this afternoon in the public hearing. Today, as well as for the other public hearings, there's a lot to digest, and people are becoming aware of getting into the details, how much more they have to understand. We are having meetings every week with different stakeholders that we deal with. We want to make sure we give you the best comments possible. And in our spare time, we're organizing our annual conference the day after these comments are due, that has nothing to do with the extension. It's just the reality that many of our members are also preparing presentations to other commissioners and practitioners, so it's a busy time, but there's so much information to digest. We ask you to consider our many appeals for an extension. We're asking for sixty days, and we hope it will resonate somewhere, and thank you again very much. One last thing, I think I mentioned this in the chapter ninety-one comments, I really hope you'll consider over the next month or so to consider having another one of these either hearings or an info session. I know that you're planning after the regs get finalized, but people need continued information, I love the Q and A suggestion or FAQs that Jamie suggested, so please, all of the above, the more we can do, the better off we'll be, thank you.
Thanks, Dot.
Thank you, Dot. I see that Maria Rose is quick-study and has already turned her camera on and is prepared to go next.
That's correct, yes, and I'm just going to be an echo chamber for all the previous comments about requesting for more time, but my affiliation is I am the current chair of the Massachusetts Statewide Stormwater Coalition, and we too have formed a small working group that is growing of interested municipalities and regional planning authorities that will hopefully have a comment letter for you. But that content of that comment letter would be more meaningful with additional time. As people have already said, there is a lot to digest. I'm very grateful for the better layout of the stormwater handbook and having a table of contents and having some graphics. It is so much more user-friendly, so I can't thank you enough for that, it's an excellent product and a huge improvement. But municipal workers, like you can see here, this is forty-two people here at six o'clock in the evening, we're busy people. You know, there's a lot going on, and there's a lot of flooding that's happened lately. And Dot McGlinsey mentioned, you know, the MACC conference. I also sit on a conservation commission, so it's a busy time for a lot of people, and the timing of this coming out right before the new year and right before Christmas, you know, I didn't even catch wind of it until early January. But in any event, I applaud DEP for putting together a very thoughtful package. It would have been nice if this had been rolled out like in a more phased fashion, particularly the coastal stuff. Because it does seem a bit separate, but nonetheless, it is what it is, and I just wholeheartedly agree with all the other previous folks that have provided testimony that additional time would be greatly appreciated to digest these materials and provide more thoughtful comments back to the DEP. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you. Okay, now is the time where we sit in comfortable silence for a moment, and I I vamp, and while other folks identify themselves, so as a reminder, if you would like to offer comments tonight, there's several ways to do it. You can either enter your name and affiliation in the chat tool at the bottom. If that is not your jam, feel free to use the raise hand button, and we will see that, and we will call on you. Or if you want to go good old school, just unmute yourself and let us know that you'd like to speak, we want to make sure that everybody who would like to offer comment or testimony tonight can do that. So that bought us a few seconds, and I see no. And Lisa and Tori, please check my math here, I don't see any additional folks who'd like to speak in the chat, nor do I see raised hands. So Lisa is being on cue. If you could, Lisa, try to put that in presentation mode, or sorry, slideshow mode. Yeah, anyway, it's okay. Right now, what we can see is, what we're attempting to do here is to put back up on the screen the slide that provides the information about how to how and when to provide public comment. There we go, perfect.
That was an accident.
That was pretty good, Lisa.
I Scott Lucky.
So this slide lets you know that we prefer electronic submission, and how to do that, we're to send that attachment in email, also, you can send us something by snail mail, paper, hard copy, comments, that's fine too. Also, in the chat, my colleague Tori has reposted the link that has instructions on how to submit comments and other information. For example, how to access the recordings and materials from the three previous public information sessions on this topic. All right, and I now wasted some more of your time to see if anybody else wanted to come forward, and I do not see any additional names in the chat, raised hands, nor unmuted microphones. So with that, I would like to thank everybody for taking part of your precious evening time that I know is limited supply, for joining us tonight for this public hearing, and for those of you who commented, thank you. And we strongly encourage anyone or your organization to submit written comments as well. And with that, we will close the public hearing, thank you, everybody.